Good evening. It is Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023, 6:30 PM. Carney Board of Alderman Meeting. Call the meeting order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the vessel with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, have you had a chance to take a roll?
I have taken roll. Everybody is present and you have a call.
We'll move on to personal appearances. We have no personal appearances scheduled on the agenda this evening. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items of discussion or questions on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, can we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Consent agenda passes unanimously. We'll move on to ordinances. The first ordinance we have this evening is presented by Rich Wood, our city attorney. An ordinance of the City of Carney, Missouri imposing a local sales tax for general revenue purposes at the rate of 3%. Pursuant to the authority granted by Article
Fourteen.
Fourteen, Section 2.6, subsection five of the Missouri Constitution, providing for submission of the proposal to qualified voters of the City of Carney for approval at our election on April 4th, 2023. Now, Rich, this is for recreational marijuana purchases only, correct?
Recreation and if it's, if it's a combined facility, it would be any purchase.
Okay.
And we have recreational.
Right.
So you're going to see a number of things related to recreation marijuana. You saw the big package last month, which was kind of the general regulations. There are going to be some employee manual updates that Sheila's working on. There's going to be a zoning code amendment that we're going to be bringing forward to after it goes to the planning commission, which just regulates where these facilities can be located. And this is kind of the, the final part, step in, in the package of things that you're going to consider. So when the voters approved the constitutional amendment, they included authority for cities to put on the ballot an additional revenue stream where you can tax marijuana sales and provide an additional revenue stream for increases, anticipated increases in city services that you might see as a result of having this newly legalized recreational marijuana. So this ordinance would call the election to be placed on the April ballot for consideration by your residents. The deadline is January 21st, 24th to certify for the county to be placed on that ballot. Again, this would just call, it's an election to decide whether or not the voters will approve a 3% is what the city is allowed to tax, 3% tax on marijuana sales.
Is that the most we're allowed?
I'm sorry.
Is that the most we're allowed?
Correct, 3%, yeah, it's the maximum.
I was wondering how you came up with that.
Nope, that's, we did the maximum.
So I think some, some talking points there. We've already seen our local sheriffs, Clay County Sheriff's Department have to retire some of their trained narcotics dogs. As, that's just going to be one expense of additional increase in operation costs that our police department's going to have additional training for officers.
A crash is not trained for marijuana.
Correct.
So we don't have to get rid of crash.
That is correct.
I was going to say, I think, Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's a municipality just south of us that has a, has this basically same thing on the ballot in April. Didn't the City of Liberty have a proposed amendment to go on the ballot?
So I don't know about the City of Liberty, but I, I don't know of any of our 70 cities that we represent that have chosen not to put it on the ballot. We haven't had a single city say, we don't want to do that yet. I think most cities are doing it.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're, if you foresee an increase in service costs and you're authorized to, to impose the additional tax to cover some of those costs, I think most cities are saying, why would we not do that?
Well, I can see where if we didn't and everybody else did, we would become the place of choice for people to come and if they can save some, some money. So I feel like with the additional costs of maybe being able to pay for more police services or more equipment to help deal with this and then not, not having extra people in our community buying. I think, I think this is a no-brainer.
Yeah, it is too. And as with anything, when we're going to our voters and asking them to approve an increase in taxation, I think we just need to make sure that they're aware that the, and, and we have a good message that it is for the, the purchase of marijuana products only. It's not a straight across 3% increase on anything else. So that has to be an important part of our message. Are there any other questions or comments from the board on this agenda? Seeing none, if we could read the proposed ordinance on the first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance of the City of Carney, Missouri imposing a local sales tax for general revenue purposes at the rate of 3% pursuant to the authority granted by Article 14, Section 2.6, subsection five of the Missouri Constitution and providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for approval at an election to be held on the fourth day of April, 2023.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance of the City of Carney, Missouri imposing a local sales tax for general revenue purposes at the rate of 3% pursuant to the authority granted by Article 14, Section 2.6, subsection five of the Missouri Constitution and providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for approval at an election to be held on the fourth day of April, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Votes unanimous on both and the ordinance passes. We'll move on to resolutions. Have a resolution this evening presented by Sheila Earnson. A resolution authorizing the city administrator to sign an amendment to our agreement with Lamp Ryanairson dated September 21st, 2021 to increase the engineering fee for a 1 million gallon elevated storage tank by the amount of $76,950.
Yes, good evening and board. So Lamp Ryanairson, the city already signed a agreement for them to provide engineering services for additional water storage and also for the disinfection improvements. But that study and agreement contemplated a smaller water storage. And so for the additional costs that will be associated with the larger storage, there would be an amendment to increase the cost of 72, an additional $76,950.
In addition, an extra 76 or 76 total?
No, an additional $76,000. The original amount was $208,050. And so this would increase an additional $76,950 for, for those changes. And then I just also wanted to remind you guys that in the presentation, that lamp that Greg Kendall gave, I, I think it was the last meeting.
Yes.
It was last year ago. Sorry, I couldn't resist. He was talking about how the cost of those improvements would be a rate increase of 17 and a half percent. So right before the meeting started, I actually passed out a couple of sheets of information to you. In the budget that was passed, that you guys passed for, that we're getting ready to end, in that budget, there was a proposed rate increase of 3% to sewer rates and 2% for water rates. There is a proposal A. That shows you what the old, the current rates and what the new rates would be if you put in a rate increase of 2% and 3%. There's a scenario B, and that is increasing water and sewer rates both at 17 and a half percent. That water rate increase would definitely be needed in order to be able to pay the debt service for the water rates to cover the debt service charge of the water rates. I also went ahead and calculated what the rate, increasing the sewer rates would look like if you chose to do that at 17 and a half percent. And we are not talking about this tonight, like, we're not, you guys aren't deciding this tonight, but I wanted to give you information for you to contemplate and think about. Because a decision will need to be made soon before we could actually build the additional water storage. Then I actually did a calculation. So I've been working on the fiscal year 2024 budget. And I have been looking at what our proposed revenues are and our proposed expense, expenses. There have been a lot of changes this year, mainly our biggest foe is inflation and the cost of inflation. And so in order to adequately cover our costs for water and sewer and the general fund not to supplement and cover any of those costs, there would actually need to be scenario C, proposal C, which would equate to additional costs for an average water and sewer bill combined, a little over $33 every month. If we were going to have the, the rates actually cover all of the expenses. And then I did a proposal H. It's kind of a hybrid to bring water rates to be able to pay for the water tower. And sewer rates are not covering, the general fund is heavily supplementing the sewer rates currently. As far as my calculations.
And it looks, and it looks like that's because we did not increase sewer rates adequately to cover the operating costs per the recommendation of the last study?
Yes, so I found a study that was prepared in June 2017. And it looks, so the sewer rates have not even increased from 2017 to 2022. They haven't even reached the second year rate increase that was suggested. So we're well, what's happening is exactly what was projected to happen with this study where we would, we would not be able to cover operating expenses with how rates were set. So really what's been happening is the water rates have been supplementing sewer costs and so has the general fund. And that, and, and that's what's been occurring. And so I just did some calculations, so to let you guys know, if you wanted to cover all your expenses, water rates to cover the water rate expenses, sewer rates to cover the sewer rate expenses. And I think that's really the goal of a proprietary fund. Proprietary funds are supposed to be paid for. The cost of service is supposed to be paid for by the users of the system and through rates. And tax, tax money is typically in governmental funds. So it's supposed to be covering things like police services because we're not charging people when they pick up the phone to call 911. For, you know, or if you had your car broken into, an officer comes out to take a report, they're not charging you for coming out and providing that service. We just pay for that service so that we can have police officers and public safety available to us 24/7 and so that it can benefit the community as a whole. Where when you have a proprietary fund, typically you have a service that's provided and that, the cost of that service is being funded by the user rates, if that makes sense. And so I just gave you, and then H is kind of a hybrid. Obviously, to have your water and sewer rates increased by $33.42 a month if you are, have a, using 5,000 gallons, it's hefty all at once. I'm not saying that it doesn't need to be a bolt and I just kind of took a hybrid in H. Although it, it doesn't make it a lot more palatable. So I just wanted to give you guys some options. Obviously, you can do all kinds of different, different scenarios. And I would be happy to calculate and show you what any ideas you might have would look like. But wanted to start it off with a little bit of information for you guys to kind of digest and.
Five years ago, when this was happening, I know why, and some of us were there. There was some pushback from, in particular, our senior citizens at the time. And they were very concerned and $30 some dollars a month may not sound like a lot, but on a fixed income it is. And at the end of the year, we're looking at over $350 for some, almost $400. $400 can buy a lot of prescriptions, all kinds of things. Which is why at the time, it was decided that we would just up the water bill and then we did it incrementally for, what, three years?
Three years.
And we didn't do the sewer, even though you are correct, it was recommended. I, I don't know how we get around our senior citizens. But I definitely see that we do need to do something.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough anytime that we go to our, our constituents and ask them to, to increase service pay for they receive, but we all know though that services aren't free. And when you look at our peer communities, even with any of these proposed increases, wherever we would decide at our board at a future meeting, we're still medium low compared to our peer cities in relative, in relation to overall costs. So I don't think it was as apparent previously, that all kind of all the county was together, one big. And now that, you know, we've grown up a little bit in the, the reporting and finance area and you know, we hired Sheila as our, originally as our finance director and spending some time on these things. And we're, we're robbing our general fund that, that does, as we know, pay for our parks and our police and, and other important services. When, I, I do agree, these, these proprietary funds need to stand at a minimum of one to one. So any other comments or, or input?
I actually have a couple. I agree with Cherry. My concern would be that, that people on fixed incomes, I understand that we have to pay for what we are offering. We have to be able to afford to provide the water. But I don't know if there are any programs out there that can help people on fixed incomes or if we as a city could offer reduced rates for, for a certain level. These are just things to talk about. I mean, I'm not, it may not work. Also, I've heard, I don't get a lot of phone calls, but what I do get phone calls on honestly is the sewer rates for people who are running sprinkler systems and filling their pools. They're paying 100% of sewer rates on water that never hits the sewer. And so I don't know if there's a way to reduce those rates so that we feel a little better about chart, raising the rates for people who are actually using the sewer system. So again, I know we're not making a decision. I just want to throw that out there because if I, if I get beat up on anything, it's, it's that. And Shirley can probably attest to that as well.
But if you drop, if you drop sewer rate for irrigation, you're going to have to raise the regular sewer rate to make your income come in. Because there's a, a big amount of water.
But I understand what they're saying. They're not using the sewer system.
Yeah.
They're using the water, but they're not using the sewer.
They do have the option, it's not a good option, but they do have an option to have a separate meter
Right.
for the sprinkler and for filling the pool. Which that, that meter would be just water, fill water and sewer.
Yeah, that was discussed last time too, for those two things.
Meter's not cheap either.
Nope. If, if you're interested, there are other ideas, things that you can do. You can do a winter average method of sewer billing. And, and that scenario, what you, what people would do is we would take their winter average billing amounts for water. We'd average that together and then all year long, they would be billed for, at the sewer only. So they pay for their actual water that they use. You would be able to bill them for their, their winter average. But what you would do is you would charge a higher rate for sewer than at the volume method. So, but it would still save them money because they would be paying a higher rate for the sewer that they use all year round. But it does help if you have a pool or if you're doing a lot of watering. That, that is an idea. Also, I do find it very interesting that, you know, one of the things that is costing us, we need to add additional water storage. We need to add additional water storage because in the summer months where we don't have enough water. And so our rates are actually set up to benefit people that are using a lot of water. The more water you use, the cheaper your water rates are getting. And that does not really make sense to me because the more water you use, the more storage we need. And so another thing that you guys could do, and this would help, senior citizens are using a small amount of water. They are typically using 1,500 gallons of water a month or less, or very close to that. So you could flip it around where you're setting a minimum bill at a lower rate and increasing the rate for people that are using more, higher numbers of gallons.
For commercial users.
Commercial and also for, you know, if, if you are not a senior citizen and you're, or even if you are a senior citizen and you want to have beautiful flowers in the summer and you want to use a lot of water, you're going to pay more. Or if you have a larger family, but senior citizens are the ones that are on a fixed income. Although, you know, any citizen is going to say, hey, my salary is set or, you know. But there, there are different ideas, like the options are limitless. And I can, I can calculate whatever you guys can come up with and you guys can make a decision.
Yeah, it's hard to make the choices. We don't want to discourage beautiful landscaping, pretty flowers, watering your trees on a weekly basis so that they do thrive in hot summer months and things like that. So I don't know.
And maybe if you did a winter, winter average method of sewer billing to save them a little bit on sewer, but then we're able to offset that with increased water rates, you know. I don't know that there's a right or a wrong answer. There's lots of different.
I, I know I wouldn't care as long as if, if my house was on fire or my neighbor's house was on fire, we had adequate water storage to, to protect property. That's, that's what I'm going to care about the most. Not, you know, a pool or, or landscaping or, I know it's tough and I appreciate you taking the time to put that together. We'll obviously have a lot more continued conversation as a board on this before we make our decision. But with, for, for now, if we could entertain a motion approving resolution 012023 authorizing the city administrator to sign an amendment to our contract with Lamp Ryanairson, increasing it by $76,950.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor? Pose. Resolution passes unanimously. We'll move on to mayor's communications. The only item I have this evening is a little update on something I've, I've spoke to the board and, and our, our public about before. But I, I think we all know that it continues to be an employee-friendly market. Our employees here at the City of Carney are our most prized asset. Our employees continue to make us successful and work hard every single day for our citizens. Since I was first elected mayor, we have continued to make positive improvements to our benefit and compensation package. However, now more than ever, I feel we have to continue to do better. I'm excited to announce that our interim city administrator and department heads under my direction are almost complete with a new position classification and compensation plan that we are working hard, really hard to try to implement into our next budget. This is something that will benefit each department citywide. This plan's number one goal is to bring the salaries for all of our positions in the city into comparison with other cities, counties, and private sector employers in the Kansas City metro area so that we can be competitive in not only employee retention, but, but attraction. Our biggest challenge to implementation will be funding. This is a good reminder that services are not free and we'll continue to work hard and Sheila will continue to work hard with department heads on this. Good example, we recently lost an ideal candidate to the City of Liberty. The same police department position in Liberty paid over $15,000 more a year in salary along with better insurance and retirement for the same position. Who wouldn't drive five miles south for such a difference in compensation? With record inflation and everything increasing in price, we must focus on this and do our best to fix this right and do it right the first time and implement it as soon as possible. As I previously said, Sheila and I are working hard to get this done and implemented. To our staff, my sincere thanks for your patience and understanding. And I want you to realize that we are working extremely hard to make sure that you are completely satisfied and receive the compensation you deserve. I promise to continue working with Sheila and our department heads and hopefully we have a great solution worked into our next fiscal year budget. So that's my update on that item. That concludes my mayor's communications and we'll move on to the city administrator's report.
The only thing that I have is to remind you guys that our next board meeting will be on a Tuesday as well because of the Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. And so I'll be here again January 17th at 6:30 PM and that is a Tuesday.
That concludes the city administrator's report. We'll move on to Alderman discussion. Alderman Spencer?
I would like to remind everyone that the Clay County bicentennial has wound down and its final public event will be this coming Thursday evening at 5:30 at Woodneath Library. This will be your last opportunity to see what was in the time capsule that they unearthed and to see a few of the items that have been collected to go into the next time capsule. Also to see the winners of the photo contest that went on throughout the year at various events. It is a free event and I encourage you all to go.
Alderman Holt?
I would like to see, as will the Alderman, I'd like to see the difference between the lease purchase agreement that we could get and putting the water tower on, on the ballot for the bonds. And the reason being is if it gets, Kathy brought up a good point last time, if it gets turned down by the voters and we have to do this anyway. I mean, that there, when, when we put it out and they say, no, we do something anyway. Well, that's, it's losing faith with the, with the citizens, even though it's something that needs to be done. I'd just like to really know what, what that cost difference really is. Cause I mean, are we going to put our reputation as a city on the line for a few hundred bucks? 2,000 bucks? 20,000 bucks? What, what, what's the, the rate of risk here? I'd like to see that.
May I answer that?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. I'm so glad you brought it up. I wish you would have brought it up under resolution.
I thought.
Because I'm not quite sure that it's a proverb for me to talk about here, but I'd like to, if I could. So, okay, Rich. Okay. So the, the real cost savings would be if we could do SRF funding. However, because the need for the water storage is imminent, like we, we already needed it constructed. We don't have time to go through the SRF process. That would take 18 months to two years. To just do revenue bonds versus, we wouldn't do lease purchase. We would do certificates of participation, which is kind of the same thing as a lease purchase. And the difference is minimal. And so. Because we don't, we're not able to wait and do the S R F funding, there's no reason to vote for revenue bonds. The difference is five to fifteen basis points, which is five. Hundred, no. Yeah, five hundredths of a cent. Like, it's almost, it's almost nothing. And so, um, revenue bonds would have helped us if we could have taken the time to go through the S R F funding. Funding process. But we don't have time for that. The, the improvement is.
So we're not going to put on a ballot name?
No, I'm sorry. Otherwise, that would have been on here.
Because I was worried about that. You made my day.
Okay, well, I'm still glad I could have done that.
So I just had a couple of items. The first one, does anybody know what's going on with Comfort Inn and the. Part of the wall that has been gone forever. Over by Sonic.
Community development. He's, he's ill and, and that's why he's not here seemingly, but I am. And Sheila could probably update. The last I knew is they were getting a notification and a letter regarding a dangerous building. With, um, that exposed section of the wall. Not certain what happened or, or why, but. I know staff's working on a solution with ownership.
I would hope it'd be a very short timeframe because it's been there for years.
We, we will be scheduling a dangerous building hearing very soon.
Okay. And I know Mr. Pavich is not here, but the second one is, I've had some questions. I think I know the answer. Down at the corner of Clark and Washington. Property that used to be a car dealership and a house next to it. There's a fence around the entire property and, and I've had a lot of questions is, why is the fence there? Think that's part of the process, tearing down those buildings and the new townhouses.
Yeah, we, we, the planning and zoning and, and board of aldermen approved a, a plan to demolish those buildings and. Future development for some townhomes. I believe the security fencing's up to, uh, start demolition of those buildings.
I think they've already started. The garage looks like they've already turned it down.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's exciting for downtown.
Me too.
It is, as long as we continue going up with townhouses. So. Yeah, it gets more people living down here. So that's, that's really, really a neat. Plus, if, if that's what it's for. The only other thing is, is mayor, you had made a comment about the position classification. Compensation study that, that you guys have been working on. The municipality that I work for, you know, just, literally just implemented. Had gone through that position classification and compensation study. They hired an outside firm to do that. Um, and they literally just, well, today, uh, everybody went back to work. Implemented the results of that, that study and. A majority of the people there. Their, their positions. Their, their titles changed and their classifications changed. My title changed and, and my classifications changed. But the biggest thing that, that they found and, and it was, it was a huge. Uh, undertaking for, for the city. Is the compensation study, the compensation part of it. It was very shocking for the, for that board and that mayor. To see what. Actually transpired in a matter of, they'd literally hired a new city administrator ten months ago. And this, this classification compensation study showed that his position that he had just been hired for. Ten months ago was being underpaid by forty thousand dollars. And, and so. I, I think it's great that we're doing this. And, and I think we as a board just need to be prepared that. It's, it's going to be, it's going to be a chunk. Because it was, uh, it was a huge chunk down there that, you know, they wound up. Going ten percent above the recommendation of the outside firm. And it was, it was over a million dollars. In excess to the, in a budget amendment to the, to the budget. So just. I, I, I think it's great. I think it's needed. We as a board just need to be prepared that. What's, what's going to come. So. That's all I have.
If I could respond to that real quick, um, I'll, I'll mention that, uh, not surprised to hear. Like I mentioned, it, it's totally an employee friendly market. That's several reasons pushing that. But I want to make it clear, our intention, I, I'm not, I'm not familiar with what North Kansas City is doing or, or have done. But I want to make it clear with the, the work that. I've been involved with and direct staff to do is the same work that I communicated to the board several months ago. That's strictly. Compensation. So I don't believe anything that we're doing has to do. Changing titles or, or anything like that. It's strictly just to make sure that. We're, we're providing the opportunity to compensate our employees fairly and to give them the opportunity to continue to step in pay increases. Um, and, and not be topped out within a couple of years. Same can be said of, of protecting our, making sure we're attracting. Good candidates in all of our departments and, and paying them fairly for that. But not making it to where a, a brand new employee coming in. Only makes fifteen hundred dollars less than a guy that's been here fifteen plus years and dedicated fifteen years of his life to our city. So. We're not at the point, obviously, to. I, I don't want to share specifics on, uh, because everything's in draft form. And, and I really want to make sure that we can work into the budget before we would pull anything forward to the board. So. But, but yeah, it's, as, to repeat what I said earlier too, is, is our, our biggest. Con- concern or, or, you know, obviously we've got to be able to pay for it somehow. So we're working really hard to, to do that in this year's budget. This next fiscal year budget, rather. Alderman Barker.
Well, I'm excited to see Arby's is making progress and going up. I'm excited to see that it looks like Starbucks maybe will be opening. Sometime soon. Um, I'm, I'm excited that in this economy that there are. Of commercial enterprises that are willing to take a, take a chance on a community like Carney's. And bringing more opportunities and choices to our citizens and giving us even more opportunity to shop local. I think it's really exciting that when we get to the point where we don't have to leave the city to do our shopping and to. To live our lives and play and work. Um, we can do all of that in Carney. That's, that's pretty exciting.
You know, the same, same thing happened to Wendy's in Liberty. It caught fire, burned down. They built a new one. And since they built the new one. I was talking with the manager, I was in the other day against Julie and they said that their business has been really busy now. They don't know if it's just because it's. New reopen, but, um, they've actually had better revenue with the new building. So maybe Arby's will do the same.
And I'm glad it didn't take two years for us to, to rebuild like that. That will conclude our alderman discussion. We do have an executive session noted up for this evening's meeting, a closed session per R S M O six-ten-oh-twenty-one. Subsection one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body. And any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys. Six-ten-oh-two-one subsection two, leasing, purchase, sale of real estate by a public governmental body. Or public knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect the legal consideration and. Six-ten-oh-two-one subsection three, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting of a particular employee by a public governmental body. When personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded. Um, and just a reminder that our meeting will adjourn from the completion of our executive session. Can we consider a motion to enter into executive session at seven-ten P M?
Make a motion. I'll second.
On the board, please.
Alderman Barker.
Aye.
Alderman Holt.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Let's unanimous, we'll enter into executive.